Call the meeting to order at 11 o'clock, this special meeting of December 22, 2021. Thanks, everybody for coming and we'll get right into it. The first item is to review and discuss ARPA funding. ARPA Committee Charge, the role of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance regarding ARPA funding. So I'm gonna do a screen share. And just walk through some information that I gathered from the, all the different sources. So is everyone looking at a blueish? PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
Hopefully, okay. Let's see. I'm working off of two different monitors here, so hopefully this will work. Are we seeing now? A slide that says highlights from CCM ARPA Toolkit?
Yes.
Fantastic. So the CCM ARPA Toolkit is a document that CCM, which is the Conference of Connecticut Municipalities, put together and published. So CCM is an organization, an advocacy organization that we as a town belong to. They also provide our PERMA insurance and they're a really great advocacy group that works with the legislature, works with the governor's office to advocate for towns. So they have created an advisory committee and from that advisory committee, they put out this toolkit. So the toolkit's available and I can send these slides to Joyce for the, for the minutes. Toolkit's available on their website. There's a lot of resources available on their website. So just to start with the basics of how much, so a total of $65.1 billion came to municipalities all across the funding. There were a couple of different funding buckets, but this one was for the, the town. So it's also referred to at the bottom of the slide as the coronavirus state and local fiscal relief recovery funds. So you may, you'll see ARPA because that's the Enabling Act and then this other CSL FRRF is the, the, the funding stream. So just over two and a half billion to Connecticut, about one and a half billion to general government, that means municipalities, and then just under a billion to boards of education. So that's separate funding that goes to the boards of education. And they have their, their deliverables and their, their requirements that they have to follow as well. Kent will receive $821,854.77 in two tranches. The first tranche was received 60 days after enactment. Enactment was in March, so we received those funds in May. The second tranche will come one year later. Some of the other questions or primary question was, when does it have to be spent by? So we get half in '22, half in '23. The funds have to be obligated by the end of December of 2024. And again, this information is from the US Treasury ARPA FAQ, which again, there are links at the bottom of the slides. Any questions?
The, the other meeting you were talking, the word tran, tranche, tranche, I had never heard of that before. And I assumed, you know, what it was. And I just looked it up this morning. That word is not in this dictionary. Webster's, but it actually is in the Oxford American. So not a word used regularly. So I had to do some research on that, not too much, but, but thank you. No, this is
Yeah, it's a, it's become a very widely used word in the last couple of years when it comes to grants and especially with this grant funding.
Really? Okay. So, so that 821,000, you know, towns across the country, everything's prorated, right? So bigger towns will get a larger slice and smaller towns will get smaller.
Yeah, there's an equation that, that the Treasury put together. And there are entitlement unit towns and there are non-entitlement unit towns where a non-entitlement unit town under 50,000, 50,000 residents. So the equation is a little bit different for the entitlement versus non-entitlement.
Okay. When, when did you first know that we were definitely getting money from this? Is there like, I mean, just a
Oh, I think there was talk on different listservs through CCM. We get a lot of information cost probably I want to say January of last year. I, I don't have a specific time, but it changed a couple of times. The amount of money. And I think that was, they were just, you know, figuring out the, the math of it all. And then the act was passed in March and then that's when we really started getting a lot more information.
Okay. And do, so there's two tranches there and then all of, all of the money must be obligated by December 2024. So all, all of it. So there's, it's not like in pieces there. So all of, you know, the first half. Okay.
And so there's a, a large bucket of money that was allocated through requests in the last, probably in the last year that, that came from the feds, that is being, there is a statewide audit on that funding. And so there's a lot of sort of expectation or, yeah, pretty much expectation that this will get audited at the other end. You know, obviously in that, you know, far down the line when this is all said and done.
Okay. Okay. How are you Rufus? Oh, sorry. Any questions?
Yeah, sorry Rufus. Any other questions on this? Slide?
No, I have none. This is pretty much background.
Yep. So these are the funding objectives. And again, this is directly from the Treasury information that, that we get. So to support the ongoing response and the recovery from. So those are the top of the food chain or the top of the information chain. That's the, the two big categories. And then it gets, these are some of the funding objectives. Again, it, the interim final rule, which is the Federal Register, what the Treasury publishes as far as the rules that guide everything as far as in general terms, eligible expenses, non-eligible or prohibited expenses, reporting pretty much soup to nuts is in the interim final rule, which is part of the Federal Register. Which is, I don't know, 40 pages, I think it is, two column. It's a, a lot of information. So again, it's not, it's not specifying specific projects or specific widgets or specific things, but rather categories of objectives. And again, this, you know, it goes back to how did, are we, is this being used for response to or recovery from? So very specific prohibited uses, can't pay down unfunded pension liabilities, cannot use to apply towards a matching fund for a federal grant. So if we were getting a our CBDG grant that we're getting for the, some of the affordable housing improvements, we can't use any of this money to apply for matching. You can't pay interest on, or principal on outstanding debt or for consent agrees, decrees or legal settlements and cannot use as to build up your rainy day funds. So those are, are quite specific. Less specific are the eligible uses. The interim final rule, I'm just going to read this because it's right from, right from there. Contains a non-exclusive list of programs or services that may be funded as responding to COVID-19 or the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency, along with considerations for evaluating other potential uses of fiscal recovery funds, not explicitly listed, listed. So I think there's six, the last five or six pages attend to that. Again, it's, we have to make sure that we're finding that thread within these categories, within these funding objectives, whether it's responding to or recovering from the negative economic impacts. And CCM did provide some feedback in the last couple of days as far as so they, the federal government can ask for the money back at the end of this if they feel, if it, if it didn't meet the eligibility, right? But we are, we get the eligibility, the broad eligibility uses. But if we, if we choose something, a project or, or a program that's not eligible, the federal government could claw back that money. So we have to be careful to just make sure we're connecting the dots all along the way and that our narrative justifies the use for the money.
Yes.
And so the, just one thing that I didn't include in here, the first reporting due to the Treasury or to the federal government is due Barbara, that's January 30th of coming up. Apologize for putting you on the spot.
I believe that's correct. It might even be March, though. I'd have to double check it.
And that has changed from the original, I think the original was in the original October and then they moved it to December. So it's it, Barbara is the primary person in the office for all of the reporting requirements, all of the grant requirements. There's, you know, deliverables and she has to put in the reports that are due. And Barbara is the, the point person on all of that as she is for all the grants. And there's a portal, we had to walk through a couple of processes to create a specific account so that we can report through the federal portal. So that's all been taken care of by Barbara already. So next up on the screen is the charge that Joyce was kind enough to put in the supporting documents for the meeting, which is to enable the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee to conduct a needs assessment to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on potential uses for ARPA funds. And the one last piece that folks have been asking about is who has the authority to appropriate funds, the, and that reads, the IFR does not provide guidance on allocation methodology. Funds are more akin to a formula grant versus a competitive grant. And towns should follow the normal process for handling supplemental revenue or special funds. And there is a motion that gets passed, that's, you know, somewhat of a housekeeping motion, I think at the May town meeting, Darlene, is that done at the May meeting or the January meeting? About?
It's done at the May meeting.
Okay. And that would make sense along with the budget. So those are, that's just sort of the the basic bones that hopefully give us sort of a starting point for discussion on this first item. Glenn? Rufus?
That is very helpful to me. Yeah, thank you for, for that. And, and just one super quick question, the, the Board of Finance, where do they fit in with all this, if at all? Do we have to report to them and what do they need from us regarding ARPA funding?
So making sure that our relationship is a good, close working relationship is really important with them.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, where, where do I see Barbara? I thought I saw Barbara. Oh, you have a different flower today. That's why I didn't recognize you. Barbara, anything further on the Board of Finance?
Nope.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with Agenda Two.
Ready. Review and
There is a hand up though, I think, if we want to take that.
Honey, I'm sorry. Yes.
I don't know if you want to take comment from the public right now, or if you want to move. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know where it's supposed to be. I just want to make sure that I'm able to say a few things at some point.
If it, if it was in reference to this first one, review and discuss ARPA funding, ARPA Committee's charge and the role of Board of Selectmen, and then was your comment about that?
Well, I'll make one comment now about that. And, you know, I, I should identify myself, I'm Connie Manis. I'm speaking as an individual here, but I am the erstwhile Chair of the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee. Obviously, this is something that's really important to the committee. We're all here. Which I think is, is, you know, significant and telling. But, you know, that, that first presentation that you just received, I think we all envisioned ourselves giving that, you know, at some point, you know, in the near future, but not too long from now, but after, you know, after we had conducted our charge. And so, you know, I'm sorry that, that you didn't get a chance to hear it from us. But that is, you know, certainly, you know, that, that presentation has been in a, a shared Google Drive, something that we've looked at and
I created that presentation last night on my couch.
The information from CDM is information that we've had in our drive, you know, all of the background, all of this, you know, the Federal Register, the rule, all of that is, you know, something that our committee did consider, has been looking at all along. I'll say more about that later. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, you should know that that was part of the vision of this committee was to be able to make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance about just what the ARPA funds are and what we found out when we surveyed our, our townspeople, our residents and businesses. So that's all I'll say now. I'll put my hand down until it's a different moment on the agenda. But I do have a lot more to say.
Thanks Connie.
Thank you.
You.
Next is review and amend decisions regarding the two expenditures from the December 14th Board of Selectmen meeting.
If, if I, I'd like to start if I may. I have two, two broad just concerns about, about, about that meeting that I would like to, to see us talk about. The first is that I just feel now, after the fact, that I just needed more time to look at all of these facts, which is why I wanted to talk about ARPA funding and review ARPA funding in, in Agenda Item Two today. And and I want to explain why I feel like I needed more time. So again, I'm a, this is my first time as a selectman. This is my very first, that was my first regular meeting on December 14th. And we talked firstly about the Town Hall Video Conference Update, UCA Tech, and, and the ability to go hybrid. You know, we're still in a pandemic. We still have issues related to, are we doing Zoom meetings? Are we doing audio? When will we ever meet physically? We're still grappling with all of this. So I was, I was excited to actually talk about this because that would solve a lot of problems. And I think would, would, would be helpful to all with these meetings. I was not concerned, but I was like, okay, the, the numbers presented to us, it was a screen share. It wasn't in the Google Drive. So I didn't have time to review that before the meeting. But nevertheless, I, I think that, that having video conferencing equipment of that, of that kind in Town Hall is helpful to us. We, we started talking at the two hour 15 minute mark and we ended at two hours 27 minutes. So everything took 11 minutes. This was a very fast agenda item. At one point, there was a question. Where do we get the money from? And, 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 and it was discussed that, that it was going to come out of ARPA funding. So, so Jean had recommended ARPA funding. And, and in that very short timeframe, it was described that we had had half of the money in the first tranche. And it was discussed briefly, do we spend 7,700? Maybe it might go a little bit over, maybe it's 10,000, maybe it's 12,000. We decided on 12. We made a motion. It passed. Personally, I was focused at that moment on the actual equipment. I was excited that perhaps we could solve a lot of our issues with with the Zoom. I didn't quite understand the ARPA funding. I didn't understand the, the Needs Assessment Committee. I hadn't looked at those minutes. I hadn't looked at those Zoom recordings. So that, that is something, you know, I, I, and I would have looked at all of that and I would have considered that, that piece, the funding piece. Right after that, we talked about another issue. And then after that, we talked about the emergency management timeline. And, and Eric and David joined us and there was a discussion about the LEOP and, 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 and the need for emergency management. There was another screen share with numbers that were not in the Google Drive. You know, I took a screenshot, they're on my phone, but I didn't be able to look at that beforehand. But we had a longer conversation about emergency management. And I again asked if we had funding for this. It was, it was said that ARPA money would be used. And that was when I started to think, wait a second. And that is when I asked at the three hour and seven minute mark, has the ARPA Committee seen this timeline or seen these numbers? And they hadn't. There was discussion about, you know, could the money come from somewhere else? Could, could there be another opinion? If you look at that meeting, I, I, I did feel a little concerned and that's why I delayed my vote. That's why this went on. And yes, we voted yes and it, and it passed. So on the, on the one hand, I I feel like it was a little rushed. I feel like I could have had more information in the Google Drive and I would have liked to discuss this further. It being my very first regular meeting, it being at the three hour mark. I'm a newbie. I'm learning. So that's the first thing. Rufus or Jean, any, anything to add to that?
I have quite a bit to say, but if you still have more.
Okay. I'll keep going. I have one more piece. And the piece is this, it is, it is the Board of Selectmen's relationship with this particular committee, with this ARPA Needs Assessment Committee. And I did see the meeting the next day, which saddened me. As a citizen of Kent, it saddened me. But as now a selectman, whose actions and inactions and questions and non-questions affected that meeting. And that is why, one of the reasons why we're here today. I really feel strongly that this issue needs to be tackled quickly. Corrections need to be made. What they are, we can decide today. And I feel that this committee needs to continue its good work and, and needs to move on because if we have another Board of Selectmen meeting and we're voting on something else, and what does ARPA think? Well, is ARPA even there? What, what, what constitutes it? And I see both sides. I see, okay. So we have emergency management and we have this hybrid technology, things that are perhaps needed. But how do you fund them? And then you have the ARPA Subcommittee, whose charge is to ask the town of Kent, what do you want to do with all of this money? And yes, the Board of Selectmen do have the right to disperse the funds. However, however, we have a very talented and devoted group of volunteers who are asking the citizens of Kent, what do you want to do with these funds? I, I tried to think of another analogy. I mean, I mean, I, I, I see the issue and, and this is the analogy and, 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 and please hear me out for a second. I'm on the Swift House Subcommittee. I'm trying to figure out what to do with Swift House. If we talk all the time about replacing the windows in a capital fund, the windows are broken, the windows need to be fixed, the windows, the windows, the windows. We have multiple meetings about windows. But it's February, the furnace breaks, the pipes are going to freeze. We need money. We need to fix that. And I go to the Board of Selectmen and say, let's get a furnace. It's needed. But I don't, but I don't go to my committee and I don't warn them or, or there's miscommunication or whatever. I would want to go to my committee and say, hey, consider this, just consider this idea, this furnace, it's important. Maybe they agree, maybe they don't. That's my Swift House analogy. So if, if these two issues, I mean, hybrid technology, a serious issue, we're in a pandemic, we need to do something about this. Are there ARPA funds for this? It seems perfectly logical that we can use funds for this. We have the funds, they're in hand. Yet there's a charge that still has to happen. Just conversation on that. Urgency management, just conversation. Maybe we can't get this, maybe the survey monkey's still up and running. Maybe we can't get a report done in time to get hybrid technology. We talked in the meeting about how, I asked, when can we get this done? Well, it might take some time. We could have gone to the ARPA Subcommittee and said, what do you think about this? The Board of Selectmen, what do you think about us voting on this? In the, in the end, we all have to work together. In the end, I don't want to see a replay of December 15th. I myself want to do the right thing by not contributing to that kind of situation. But right here, right now, I wanted the meeting, I wanted the meeting to discuss this and I'm sorry if it was quick. I'm sorry if I didn't communicate very effectively with everybody involved, but this is a serious issue. We have funds, this, this, this town needs to use these funds somehow. We need to have this committee continue its good work in good faith. And yes, the Board of Selectmen have the say, the final say. I'm also there on the board. And I would like to have a say, I would like to disperse funds, but I want to hear from this committee. I want this committee personally to fulfill its charge so that I can make informed decision about funds and how they're utilized. I strongly believe that. I strongly believe that. Enough from me.
Thanks, Glenn Rufus.
I remember saying that. Before we even had any meetings. I wanted to make sure that I had as much. Information at least forty eight hours in advance. In order to make. A. An informed decision. And. I think that. This is. Probably an example of, of. Not having. The information ahead of the meeting. And going forward. You know, if we don't have. Solid information about. Certain issues. We're gonna have to postpone them. Regardless, because it's not fair to. Glenn and I to get information or incomplete information. I know the ARPA funds. I mean. What you presented. Jean at the beginning was background. I think those of us who have read through a lot of this. That, that's not the issue. Those funds aren't the issue. And I firmly believe that the. Committee that you formed should. Be allowed to do the charge and I, I. Looked at the eight hundred plus that we were getting and I thought, well, you know, we. We need these things and again, I felt a little bit rushed at that meeting. Do we need hybrid? Maybe. I am. Proponent for meeting in person. I, I can't stand these. All Zoom meetings. I, I wanna be able to meet in person. I know Roxbury spent thirty thousand dollars to do that for their room. But I also know that. Talking to Jimmy who put that together, who's in the town hall. He could have probably put a, a room together for us for less than five. Just as adequate. We don't know how long we'll need it. And. He was never. Asked to. Produce any information. I know a lot of people in town are like, what, what is emergency management? And, you know. How does it work? I've talked to Eric several times to find out, you know. And he's. It, it is mandated by the state that each town has. An emergency management plan needs to be updated. We're way behind in that. We've got to add the. Pandemic information, the COVID protocols, et cetera, et cetera. It's gotta be done. Both of those, I think, could be, you could argue for or against whether those are ARPA available. And I think. We voted because. We sort of felt that they were both. Needed. And it would be a way not to disrupt. The budget. But. Again, I don't think that we had. All the information. In hindsight. I'd rather spend. Five thousand or less on a. Hybrid room. Instead of twelve, certainly not thirty. I think we can do it and we've got a guy in the building who is probably capable of directing us. I think that. The committee. Was a little shortchanged and I wasn't sure. Where else funds could come from. And I think that that needs to be better presented. For any future. Expenditures or things that come up that. The other two selectmen have. Not necessarily been privy to all the events leading up to that. Request. I would hope that this committee. Stays together. Because I think it's important that the people. Of Kent, the citizens of Kent have a chance to. Have a say. They may not, in, in the final. Breakdown, some of the things may not work exactly, but they would have had their say unimpeded. I did not think the small amount that we were taking out would have affected the, the major issues. But again, in hindsight, I had. I didn't see. The reaction. Are there other things we can do to go ahead with the? Funding of these two things? Yes, I think we could probably. Fund for a lot less the. Hybrid room equipment. And in talking to Eric, I think. We'd have the same situation if the, if this, if we take away our. Green to fund the emergency management proposal. Think we'd probably have the same issue with as. And reaction as the ARPA committee. I think both Eric and. Our director. Would, would be fed up and maybe say, that's enough. We're not interested. And Eric, I think is an important cog in that. Maybe since a lot of the issue was whether or not. An expenditure of over twenty thousand from our budget. Would. Kick off the need for a town meeting. And we were thinking that. The. Grant. That would come back because we started this thing. Would, would bring that down to under twenty. I'm not sure that we would get the grants this fiscal year. So maybe we. Partially fund it. So that they can get started and feel that we're gonna back it. There are ways probably that we could do this. We need to know these things. We need to have. Time and forty eight hours probably isn't even enough on some of these issues, but I feel that. We didn't have that information fully. And again. To try to make a decision. When. You're. In, in a marathon. Three quarters of the way through a marathon. You're a little tired. You're not thinking quite straight. That's very tough. So I hope we can come to. Some arrangement here. Whether we rescind it, but you know, we, we need to have certain things. In place. I would wanna make sure that the emergency management team, if we do rescind the. Motions that we at least fund that. To a point where they. Know that we are going to back them between this year and next year's budgets. Fully. I'm less enthusiastic about. Making a definitive. Decision on the hybrid room tonight. But I would like to say that I. I'm hoping that the. ARPA committee stays together. And I believe that Connie and Patricia were two key cogs. I went back and I looked through all the minutes of the ARPA meeting and I think that. That committee needs you two and I would hope we can come to an agreement where that committee can move forward where you two are still on it.
So can, we need to stay on the task because we're in a special meeting, so that number three. Review and amend decisions regarding the two expenditures. Before we go to the next two topics. Review and amend decisions regarding the two expenditures from the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. So we still, we need to sort of finish out that.
We are on task. These are all related.
Sure, yeah, they are. And it's. I. I'm just trying to.
Yep.
Keep us linear and sequential.
May I make a motion on number three, if I may? Okay, and, and before I make the motion, I do want to state. You know, thank you, Eric and David for, for this town. And. Whatever happens here in no way shuts the door to the conversation. That needs to happen moving forward. Having said that. I move to rescind the motion made at the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting to allow up to twelve thousand dollars to purchase and install the necessary equipment. In the large meeting room to conduct hybrid meetings using ARPA funds.
Second.
Discussion?
Is there any? Discussion Rufus Connie, do you have your hand? Up related to the motion? I saw it up before.
I can wait if you wanna take a vote.
If it was related to the motion, we're happy to, to hear a comment.
I. You know, I wanna make sure that we're going to. Address. The emergency management funding. During this meeting.
Right. Connie had her hand up and I was just. Checking in to see if she had, because her hand was up prior to the motion. So I was just checking to see if.
Yeah, you already did that, Jean. Okay, so I went back to the. Other question, which was, did I have any comments? So Glenn, are we going to? Be able to? Move forward later with a? New motion to? Support. Emergency management?
Well, I believe the motion on the floor right now.
The motion on the floor, right?
The motion right now is about the hybrid. Meeting, the twelve thousand. So we can, we can address emergency management in the next motion. Is that's okay?
And I have three hands up Rufus that I'd like to get. Have those folks be heard.
Yep.
Connie, I'm doing this in, in order of how I saw the hands. I'm just gonna check in with Connie again if she had something with. In regards to the motion.
I'll go ahead now. So, you know, I heard the lack of information, you know, be referenced a couple of times in the discussion. On this agenda item. And, and hindsight really is twenty twenty. I went back yesterday. Or maybe it was Monday and reviewed. All of the recordings of all of our meetings and, and. You know, actually, you know, there was mention of the emergency management team submitting a proposal. To our committee on October thirteenth. You know, there was, there was, it was supposed to come to us that meeting. We actually tabled, we, we did not discuss it because we didn't have it. But it never did come. And so, you know, none of us had that. Ever. But also, you know, the prevailing theme throughout all of these meetings from many members of the committee.
Connie, I don't mean to cut you off, but we're, I'm trying to keep us focused to the motion that's on the floor because we have a motion on the floor to rescind the, the.
Right. I'm not gonna talk about E M P. I'm gonna talk about. The prevailing. Theme throughout.
Does it relate to the, right, but does it relate to the motion that's on the floor to rescind the motion?
I told you I would wait, Jean, but now you've called me again. So just please hear me out.
Because I'm going across the pains and your hand was up in, in, as the first hand up. So I'm. I'm really trying to follow the.
Going to say this later. So do you want it now? Or do you want it later?
If you can, if it's not related to the motion, if you could lower your hand and. Just hang on until we get to this, that part of the agenda.
It's very related to the motion and here's what the select board needs to know. That the prevailing theme throughout every single one of our meetings from every single one. Of our participants and they all did participate, whether or not the minutes seemed to show that Patricia and I. Did more is, that is not true. This was a pretty active committee, you know, everyone commented. But the comment throughout was. Let's see what the data shows. About the impact to our residents and businesses before we make any decisions. There was a letter that was sent out to town boards, but again, the thought was. Let's hear what they have to say. But first and foremost, let's take care of our townspeople. Let's take care of the people doing business in our town. It happened over and over again in the meetings and I noticed it so much more. Now. You know, than I did then. But it was. Ever present. So I think that the idea. That ARPA funds might be used for other. Needs. Was, was there too, was not something that the committee would have been against, but they very much wanted to see. What the need was, what the impact was across the board in our community before really getting to any of that discussion. And you know, there may be, I, I don't see the immediate need to vote on any of those proposals. But what you should know. Also is that it wasn't, you know, that proposal wasn't made to our committee, but others were. There had been proposals from groups, from individuals. That we stored away in our drive. Because. We didn't wanna make any kind of recommendations. We didn't think it was appropriate to make allocations until we had a full understanding of the need. So what are you gonna say to those folks? You know, who we parked, who we said to them, thanks very much for your proposal. We're not putting it forward right now. We're gonna conduct our assessment. Why is it that Jean's pet projects can get to jump the line? That is not right. So. I think that what happened in retrospect. Is that the survey results started to come in. And there was a fear that, you know, maybe there wouldn't be money to do these two things. I don't know. I don't know. And the reason I don't know is it was never brought to the committee. This town is broken. The reason. The, the. The reason that it could be helpful. To have a member of the select board on a Subcommittee. Is to make sure that there is full and open communication and that it's coordinated. And instead. That was, that was not what happened here. Instead, information was selectively used. And information was selectively communicated. And that is, I mean, that, that's. That's very broken. Our town needs to do better. And that is what I have to say about the motion that you have on the table for an expenditure. Prior to getting the survey results back. Survey results that would have been back by mid-January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, you had your hand, you have your hand up still. And again, we're, we're trying to, we need to stay specific to the motion that's on the floor, which is to rescind that motion for the technology.
Yes, yes, Jean. This is, this is like a fast-moving situation now. Okay. So getting back to Glenn's, Glenn said that he was rescinding. Glenn, you said you're rescinding your, your vote?
Well, that, that's the motion on the floor, yes.
Okay.
To rescind the motion. Can you read back the motion, Joyce, just so we're all clear? Or Glenn, if you had your, if you had it written down by all means.
I can do it, yes. I move to rescind the motion made at the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. To allow up. to allow up to twelve thousand dollars to purchase and install the necessary equipment in the large meeting room to conduct hybrid meetings using ARPA funds.
Okay, so, what, what I, I've made notes prior to the meeting today. And anyhow, what I've done is I've, I've isolated the two proposals. Proposal one, proposal two, uh, emergency management being one proposal and the internet connection being the second pro- proposal, so, um, just concentrating on now the, um, the internet, hybrid internet proposal. That's, that's been rescinded, and then the emergency management is still uh open for discussion, am I, am I correct on that?
Correct, the motion on the floor is for that, the technology-related motion from the other night to be rescinded.
Okay, so now, the, the, uh, the internet hybrid, um, matter will be, um, it'll be brought to the, uh, brought up for discussion at the ARPA committee? When it, you know, when whatever, uh, happens, happens?
Not necessarily. Because if we find funding for that room that, where the funds could come from somewhere else, a contingency or whatever, it might not even be ARPA.
Okay, now, I've tried, as I said, prior to the meeting today, I've jotted down some notes. Uh, and one, and like I said, the second proposal for the hybrid meeting, um, I, I put down that, um, that, um, uh, I've written it here, um, okay, this, this proposal for the hybrid meeting. It had to be got, the information had to be gotten from somewhere. So, was this information gotten from the survey that was taken, is that why it was proposed?
No, Joyce and I had been working on this for a couple of months, Joyce, right? We had another vendor come out and walk through the, the room and give us a price quote. It was much, much higher, it was, I think, three times as high, Joyce, two or three times. And we put it on the back burner for a bit, and then we talked to Yucatech, which is our IT vendor, our that we work with for everything in the building, and they came and did a walkthrough and gave us a price.
Okay, so now, since this didn't have anything at all to do with the results from the survey, then this was just something that the, that was never brought up or discussed at the ARPA, ARPA meetings, so, um, you know, and I was at all the meetings that we've had, so it, this was just done without any consultation um, to use this portion of the ARPA funds. Um, in other words, it was suggested to use it, but the committee had no knowledge of this.
Correct. It was something that Joyce and I had been struggling to figure out because there's no, um, there, there's, the equipment is backordered, there's, there were a lot of issues because everybody's trying to do this. And so we put it on the back burner for, I don't remember how long, a month or two. And then, um, we decided to call Yucatech, sort of the obvious folks to call because they already have done all of our IT in the building, and they were able to give us a price.
Okay, so, um, I guess it's moot at this point because, uh, it was just, the vote was, um, turned down.
We haven't voted yet.
That's all I have to say.
Rufus and Glenn, um.
I'm done, I can vote.
I didn't hear what Jean said.
I was just looking for any further comment from the board.
No comment.
Okay, so we'll, um, we'll take the vote. Uh, Joyce, can you read the, uh, motion back?
Jean, I know, we've had it read twice, I don't think she needs to read it again.
I'd just like to have her read it back.
Glenn, could you read it, please?
Okay. I moved to rescind the motion made at the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting to allow up to twelve thousand dollars to purchase and install the necessary equipment in the large meeting room to conduct hybrid meetings using ARPA funds.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have one more motion, if I may. I moved to rescind the motion made at the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting to spend up to twenty-four thousand dollars from the ARPA fund to pay for the budget as presented by the emergency management team.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion Rufus, or, I'm sorry, either Rufus or Glenn, not calling on anybody specifically.
Just to state that, I would like to continue the discussion about emergency management moving forward. That's all.
Rufus?
No, I mean, I, I believe that we should fund these things, um, but knowing now that the ARPA committee wasn't informed of this, and I believe that they should have had a chance to have a clear slate, I will go along with it, however, uh, I also believe that we need to do something immediately, even the, uh, if it's at this meeting to find funds or partial funds for the emergency management team, so that they do not disband, and where we have to start from, totally from scratch.
Noted Rufus, I got you.
Donna, you have your hand up, and again, let's please stick to the motion that's on the floor about rescinding a motion.
Um, it is, um, and it's about the motion for the grant, uh, for the funding. My question, I guess, or comment is, um, looking at the survey that the ARPA team has created. The funding for that, um, program was not in there. Um, it was not a question as part of the survey. Um, and I would ask that the Board of Selectmen actually look very closely at the funding that's being requested because some of that funding, um, I don't believe falls within the ARPA criteria, because it does become a cap, not a capital, but an operating expense such as the purchase of different items, um, money that's gonna be going to the cert team. They're gonna be getting money back from the writing of the, um, the update to the plans. There's gonna be ten thousand dollars that are gonna be returned, can you take that money and put it back into the capital? Um, or into the general fund, according to, uh, if it's an expenditure from ARPA. So I just caution the selectmen that they actually look at the criteria of ARPA and the criteria for that one particular program, I'm not gonna talk about the validity of the program. Um, just the fact that you have to be careful that the money that you're taking from ARPA actually fits the criteria and I did not see that listed, um, anywhere on the criteria of the ARPA, um, listing. That's it, that's all I wanted to say, thank you very much.
Thanks, Donna, I thought I signed another hand up.
I see no other hands.
Yeah, I thought I saw another hand up. Any further comments Rufus and Glenn?
None for me, but Joe has his hand up.
Thought I saw one.
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah, I just, uh, wanted to comment on the, um, uh, the emergency management, you know, being a member of the ARPA committee and so forth, um, you know, there exists now a request in the, in the file for emergency management, which did not, was not there before, so, um, whether or not this has any bearing on anything, you know, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So the, the fact that I didn't send that to you, uh, to the ARPA committee is my fault. That was my oversight. Are we ready to take a vote? Glenn, if you could read that motion back quick for us?
I shall. I moved to rescind the motion made at the December fourteenth Board of Selectmen meeting to spend up to twenty-four thousand dollars from the ARPA fund to pay for the budget as presented by the emergency management team.
All those in favor of rescinding the motion? Was that an aye Rufus?
Yes, that was.
Okay, and I'm gonna abstain, so the motion passes. Moving on to number four. Review and accept the resignation of two members of the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee, Connie Manis and Patricia Oris. So we need to, um, their letters were both in the Google Drive for the meeting. Um, so we need to move to accept the resi- those, uh, letters of resignation.
Is, is it possible that we could table that?
We can, we could also procedurally, um, head into a motion and then ask for discussion and my first question would certainly, um, be to each one of them if, um, they would be willing to rescind their resignation letters, and I've submitted to Rufus and Glenn this morning um, an email just letting them know that I'm stepping off the committee.
I did not get that email.
It was sent twenty minutes before the meeting started, so, may just not have seen it. So we can, if you want, we can, um, table that motion, we need to, uh, motion to table it.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling the motion for item number four? Thank you. Number five, review and appoint new members to the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee if necessary.
So, so with Jean stepping off, uh, I'm assuming Rufus, it's up to me and you to fill that spot. And, um, tell me your thoughts Rufus, if you feel strongly, you would like to be on it, I know that you are, you are in a couple of other committees. I wouldn't mind being on this myself.
No, I, right now, right with the two other committees that I'm on, searching for people. That's a plateful. However, I, I really would like to, um, make sure that, uh, I, you know, I, I before, just as part of the discussion, I really hope Connie and Patricia you know, take back their letters of resignation, I think they've done really good work and keep that committee and then I would make a motion to have Glenn step in as the Board of Selectmen representative or member of that committee.
So let's, um, let's, uh, try to stay somewhat procedural, um. Connie, would you consider, um, being reappointed, um, to the committee? Since we're under that agenda item.
I really don't think so, and I'm sorry, uh, to the committee for that, um. I don't really believe thankfully that anything that I did was, you know, specific to me, I think that any concerned towns person could do what I did, uh, you know, it, I, I, I think that it's quite possible that this committee can sail along now. Uh, it's gonna need some new blood, but I, you know, I, I think having had this experience that both the Board of Selectmen and the committee, I, are gonna play better together. And, you know, we've got a good survey underway, we're gonna have great data, got focus groups planned. Uh, you know, I'll participate, maybe, uh, I did fill out the survey as a, as a business owner and a resident. Uh, but, you know, I, I, I really feel burned by this and, uh, I, I don't have a lot of time. Um, I think some of you are aware, uh, of the different ways that I contribute civically, but also the, you know, that's the, the jobs that I have and that I have a, a family that's living at home. I, I, I'm not gonna come back, I'm sorry.
Thank you Connie, thank you for everything.
Truly thank you for
Thank you.
Running great meetings and even when you were on the road, always running a, a really tight and productive meeting, um, Patricia, I see you on the call, would you consider coming back on to the committee?
I think I would, um, I felt like we were doing important work. Um, I felt connected to other members of the committee. I'm sad that I won't have the opportunity to work with Connie more closely. Um, so, I would definitely consider it. Um, but the, the person who, we have to get someone new. Um, maybe even, uh, two people to replace Connie and then if we got two people, we would have an odd number of committee members, which is always preferable to even numbers, so, um, with that caveat of, we have to look for two really good worker bee team members. I would definitely consider staying on because it felt meaningful to me. I felt like I was making very meaningful contributions to the town, so I would consider that with Jean stepping down, Glenn stepping in and finding a good replacement or two for Connie, um, I'd be good.
Thank you Patricia.
Then I would change my motion to appoint Glenn and also reappoint Patricia to the committee with the idea that we still have to find one or two others.
Was there a motion on the table? Joyce, was there a motion on the table? I didn't think we had one on the table.
I didn't make one.
In conversation Rufus said he would make a motion, but there was no second.
You, you got this motion Rufus, if you want.
What?
You got this motion if you want, your call.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
So your motion is?
Motion to, to appoint Glenn and to reappoint Patricia.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks. So we do need to, and I'm not sure, um, actually, that's what I was looking for from a procedural standpoint. How to untable number four? Darlene, any pearls of wisdom for, um, untabling a motion, untabling an item?
No, because I think that procedurally I would have, I would have formally accepted the resignations.
Yep.
As is, because now even just the wording of reappoint- As is, because now even just the wording of reappointing Patricia, you've never really accepted her resignation to begin with.
Yep.
So, um, I'm not sure, I, I mean, I can just say that you could just logistically make sure you're now on record as accepting those written resignations into the record for the meeting.
I'm gonna, um, Donna, you have a lot of procedural history and I see your hand up.
Right. Typically when you, you table something, it means that you're, you are leaving it open for possible discussion up until the end of the meeting. Um, it's when you continue something that it goes to another meeting.
So we don't have to make another motion to untable it?
No, I would make a motion to move the agenda item to hear that agenda item, agenda item number four. Move to hear agenda item number four at this point in the meeting. And then go through your discussion at that point in time.
Okay.
Because tabling is just moving it to the end of the meeting. Continuing is to doing it to another meeting.
But we do have to make another motion to, um, to consider that item now.
Yes, you have to make a motion to move agenda item number four to be heard after number item five.
So moved. Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, um, we're now on, back on four. We've, I think we've reviewed them and talked about them. I greatly appreciate Connie reconsidering and, you know, reconsidering on this public forum very much. Um, and we will, I'll make a motion to, um, with, with sadness, accept the resignation of, um, Connie Manis from the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee.
Second.
Thank you for your work, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
Truly. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Drudgingly. Aye. And so we should, just from a procedural housekeeping standpoint, we should, um, the motion that you made Rufus was to reappoint, um, Co, uh, Patricia. So now we have to in arrears, accept her letter of resignation because we've already, um, reappointed her. This is all backwards, but
Yeah.
Here we are.
I understand. Okay.
Second, just housekeeping to get us through so that you make sure everything's on the record. All those in favor of accepting Patricia's resonate, letter of resignation?
Aye.
Aye. We are now on to number six to adjourn. Time is 12:13 according to Apple and we will adjourn. I hope everyone has a great holiday. Thanks for coming and we appreciate hearing from everyone on this.
Thank you.
Be safe with the little bit of weather that's coming.